How was your weekend?
Oh, it was great.
You think?
Yes, ma'am.
You think? Okay. You know, I gave you credit for that.
Good morning, Sean.
A couple of weeks ago, we were in Creo waving in the water. We weren't floating.
Really?
Good morning, Sean.
Oh, yeah. It didn't have.
I just wanted to let you know that if you would just share your screen and then we can start from there. I guess Matt, you're gonna open first.
Sean, it's Matt. Just wanted to make sure you go out here.
Yeah. I didn't get all of that. But I think.
Sean, I'm here. It's Matt. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you clear.
Okay. I appreciate you guys. And I'll introduce you and then we'll go from there. Thanks.
That's kind of fun.
Ten o'clock. Ten o'clock.
Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet reg session on July 19th, 2022, 10:00 a.m. Commissioners Court Room, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is identification and pledge allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag. Commissioner Aldridge, allegiance.
Almighty and everlasting, we thank you for your blessings. We ask that you give us your wisdom so that we can use it in accordance with your will. And we ask that you continue to bless us and protect those who protect each and every one of us, both here and abroad, in your most almighty and righteous name. I ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we will move on to number three, presentation and discussion. Brazos Valley Economic Development Corporation FY 2021 incentive compliance reports. And Matt, you want to lead off?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you so much for having us via Zoom. Thanks to our new world here. We have both Sean Portales and Caitlin Glenn with Ryan LLC. This year, we have chosen to use Ryan LLC to do our compliance, to have a third party with this. And so Ryan will be presenting this year's compliance reports for the companies that are under incentive. Thank you, sir. Sean, turn it over to you if you want to share your screen. It's Matt. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt. Yeah, if I cannot currently have the rights to share my screen via Zoom, if somebody can please grant me that access.
Sean, we do have a backup. I think the ladies here are gonna get you set up to share. But also all of the Commissioners and the Judge do have hard copies of your report. Sean, just stand by. There you go. We've got you now.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Matt. Good morning, Brazos County Commissioners Court. My name is Sean Portales. I'm a senior consultant at Ryan. Also joined by Ms. Caitlin Glenn, who's the Director for the Credits and Incentives Division at Ryan as well. So just to kickstart the presentation, there are six companies that we were tasked and engaged with in terms of overseeing, you know, gathering of documentation and trying to, you know, find out the compliance status for each of those six companies. And that was between Brazos Valley Economic Development Corporation and several other jurisdictions like the City of Bryan and the City of College Station. And so the chart below outlines the six companies, which are at Penta, Axis Pipe and Tube, Fuji Film, LSPI, ViaSat, and Wayfair. And each of those companies shows whether or not they're currently in compliance. Out of the six, three are currently in compliance and three are virtually not in compliance. And the next column over shows which metric is currently left outstanding as part of the reason why they, you know, didn't meet threshold, you know, and come to compliance for each of their respective agreements. And so as well, it also kind of shows which each of the incentives and how they're laid out as well in terms of anything being pending or anything that was, you know, in terms of being owed or not paid. And so this next slide just shows aggregately, you know, despite that three companies were not in compliance, there's still, I think, a substantial amount of impact for each of the regions in terms of, you know, combined payroll. It's over $93 million. You know, and levels of investment are over $394 million. And all of these six agreements with these six companies, you know, they were able to create over, you know, 1,300 jobs as well. So the first company that we'll see is Adanta. And unfortunately, Adanta did not meet their compliance status for 2021. It's highlighted there below. They did meet their employment requirement of 20, and they had 25 on the payroll, but they didn't meet the payroll threshold of 2.3 million. Additionally, they did not also meet their investment value per BCAT. And so for that reason, you know, there's still also something pending in terms of their incentive grant that is for $50,000 with Texas A&amp;M in terms of R&amp;D agreement. They do have other engagements with Texas A&amp;M, but nothing specific in terms of R&amp;D. The second company is Axis Pipe and Tube. Fortunately, this company did meet their compliance thresholds in terms of their payroll, their investment value. Their investment value is substantially, you know, well above the necessary threshold. The employment, even though the requirement says right there, 285, 285 after speaking with the plant manager for Axis Pipe and Tube, that basically means, you know, if the plant was running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, no maintenance time at full capacity. And so I believe that there was a Second Amendment that was drafted with the Economic Development Corporation that kind of embedded a formula for the payroll and the investment value as well as the employment. And because the investment value is, you know, significantly high, you know, for that reason, and it's shown there on the left side of the slide there, the company as a whole, you know, is still in compliance. The next company is Fuji Film. And Fuji Film also met all of their compliance thresholds. But I'd like to note that this, in our assessment of all six companies, Fuji Film was the one that really not only met their thresholds, but they really exceeded across the board in every metric. And so the cash incentives are listed above there for 2021. But in terms of the employment, I'd like to start there. They had a requirement of 100 people, but they have 677 in terms of their employment numbers. And for that reason, they also vastly exceeded their payroll threshold as well, you know, from almost tenfold. Their investment values are also, you know, very much, you know, way above what's required in terms of the agreement. And so just something to keep in mind for the County Commissioners Court, you know, Fuji Film did a great job and they were very, very responsive across the board in terms of providing all of the documentation for this project. LSPI is the third company that also did meet their performance metrics for payroll and investment value as well as employment. They, LSPI actually did very well as well on the investment value. They had a requirement of 20 million, but, you know, they're at 62 million. They also did very well on employment. They have a requirement of 24, but they have 32 on the payroll and they still have, you know, they still met their $1.5 million payroll threshold and they're at 2.3 million. Unfortunately, ViaSat on this slide is the second company that did not actually meet their compliance status for 2021 for a couple of reasons. Their incentives listed above there are 40%. Their payroll requirement is 17 million and fortunately they're at 10 million. Their investment value is the exact same as 2020. And after speaking with the contact there, basically they mentioned that they have not made any investments of any kind from 2020 to 2021. And their employment numbers of the requirement being 280, they're currently at 120. And so, you know, for not meeting the employment of 280 or meeting the payroll requirement of 17 million, you know, they're currently not in compliance. And last, but certainly not least, Wayfair is the last company on this slide here. But unfortunately, they also did not meet their compliance status for 2021. I mean, they were certainly, I think, very close, but for payroll, they have a requirement of 10.8 million and their payroll was 9.9. Their investment, they did meet that, you know, threshold of 350,000 and they're currently at 637,000. But their employment requirement of 300, you know, was a little shy and they're currently at 258. And so I'd like to thank everybody for this quick presentation. If anybody has any questions?
So let me ask, your middle column on each one of them is investment value. Is that what the appraisal district or is that really what they invested? Because I think most of our contracts were written, have been for a long time, to where it is the appraisal district value, not what they invested. So does that middle column reflect what the appraisal district values it at? BCAT? I see the BCAT there, so I guess that's what that is.
Yes. And so just to expand on that a little bit. Great question. Thank you. Some of the companies, for example, and I'll go back to the first slide, they were a little late in terms of filing their, I passed it. They were in terms of, a little late in terms of their, the paperwork that they needed to file with BCAT. For example, Adanta, that's why there's a little bit of discrepancy in terms of investment value requirement and what they currently have there. Because when they presented something, it was, you know, the number was higher than the requirement. But BCAT, after looking everything over, you know, basically had that investment value of 1.2 or 1.1. And so some of the companies like Adanta, they're currently going through that process of making sure that, invalidating those investment values.
Okay.
I have a question, sir. With regards to the employment and payroll, I noticed that at Adanta, the payroll is quite, quite a bit less than what was projected, but the employee, number of employees is above. So does that mean that they're underpaying their employees? How do I interpret that? Looks like they're underpaying employees. Can you address that?
So that was something that, you know, wasn't directly asked to Adanta, right? That did come up as a, you know, potential question. If the employment number stays exactly the same, you know, three years in a row, then why exactly are the payroll numbers dropping? You know, the only thing I can say is that, you know, from 2020 to 2021, there were, you know, a lot of payroll changes because of the pandemic. But that is certainly, I think, something that, you know, we can ask Adanta directly as a follow-up to them in terms of whether or not potentially, for example, maybe they made salary cuts, right? Or performance bonus cuts or anything, you know, things like that. But in terms of giving, you know, a very, you know, direct answer, I currently don't have one, but I can certainly follow up with you on that.
I would appreciate it. And this is Commissioner Irma Colley asking.
Commissioner Colley too, and Sean, I can help with that. Their average per employee is $79,075 for their annual wages per year. So still well above the county average, but we'll look into that and ask them. One other thing on Adanta is we do have a new project with them. They're expanding into the ETJ, into the county. So we're excited about that from an economic development standpoint and we'll keep you posted on the progress of their new project.
And Matt, I appreciate that explanation. But when it comes to salaries, the practice has been that the lower paid employees are still low and the higher paid employees, the executives, get the bonuses and all of that. So I'd like to know, what's the lowest paid employee making?
We will find that out, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
The average employee making? Because we're, times are, they're underpaid. And I'd like to.
We'll be happy to do that. And we do have the detail per employee, not by name, of course.
No, of course not.
But we can give you that information. We'll be happy to share it.
One of the things personally I've tried to fight in this community is underpaying, you know, the average labor.
Yes, ma'am.
The basic person. Janitors.
Matt, if you'd share that information with the whole court?
We'll be happy to, ma'am.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
As I understand from the report of the three non-compliant, the only one that Brazos County has any interaction with or needs to take action on is ViaSat.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Do we need an agenda item in the future in order to take action on that?
I believe that would be, yes, I think so.
I'd ask that we put that item on the agenda after reviewing the report here in order to take action based on the 40% 38381 cash incentive for Brazos County.
I believe we'll have to take action on all the ones that are compliant as well as the ones that we deal with that are non-compliant, which would be ViaSat. Just kidding.
And just so you'll know too, ViaSat specifically did not, that they, as a company, are not asking for anything from many of the jurisdictions. They know that they're under their numbers.
Thank you.
Keep that.
Okay. Anything else?
Just, wow. Fuji Film Dyson, what an amazing contribution that is to our community from an economic development perspective, as well as Axis Tube. If you look at those two companies alone and.
Very impressive.
A very significant contribution to economic reality in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, and thank you for your support in economic development. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Next, we will consider and take action on Agenda Acts 4 through 31. Number four is approval of reappointment of the following BBCOG Board of Director's. Term appointment is October 1, 2022 to September 30, 2025.
Move approval A and B?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'm, I'm, pardon me. Oh, thank you for the work. I didn't vote because I'm, okay, thank you.
Motion passes. Number five is request from Sheriff's Office for acceptance of the donated funds in the amount of $7,277.25 from the Texas Association of Counties to be used for, on employee safety equipment. Funds will be used through the TACRMP website.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is request from Sheriff's Office for acceptance of five ballistic windshields plus installation in the amount of $37,500 property donated by Operation Safe Shield.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion.
A significant thank you to the Operation Safe Shield folks for raising this money for us. Wonderful to be able to protect our offices.
Absolutely.
Right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is approval of Amendment Number Six to the Service Agreement between TAMU Health Science Center in Brazos County with acceptance of $10,000 in grant funds.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is approval of October of order dividing Election Precinct 45 and creating Election Precinct 80 due to Brian ISD redistricting.
Move?
Approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval of order dividing Election Precinct 15 and creating Election Precinct 106 due to Brian ISD redistricting.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval of order dividing Election Precinct 88 and creating Election Precinct 107 due to Brian ISD redistricting.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is approval of order dividing Election Precinct 7 and creating Election Precinct 83 due to Brian ISD redistricting.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. And number 12 is approval of order dividing Election Precinct 7 and creating Election Precinct 103 due to Brian ISD redistricting.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is approval of final payment of LDF for construction of the Ag Extension Office in the amount of $69,061.98. This includes a reduction of the liquidated damages, $20,000 in lieu of $116,500 for contract days and $19,405.2 for additional architecture time. The contractor will be debarred for a period of three years.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is approval of increase of Dynastyle Club credit card in the amount of $1,000 to $2,000 for Cheryl Kaufman to assist Brazos County Commissioners Court with conference and seminar accommodations.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is approval of contract 22-140 cellphone texting and archiving with Smosh.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is approval of contract 22-150 document management automation and digital imaging with Vista Solutions Group LP.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17 is approval of contract CIP 22-630 for replacement of various roofs, Phase Four Juvenile Sheriff's Office Road and Bridge Facilities on Highway 21 and with Duralast Inc.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 18 is award of RFP CIP 22-641 replacement of various roofs, Phase Five JP Constable Precinct Three Juvenile Detention Center portable recommended award is first choice commercial roofing.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 19 is approval of final plat of Southern Point subdivision 103 and 119, 14.848 acres. Shret D. Smith League A-210, City of College Station, ETJ Brazos County, Texas. Sites located precinct one.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 20 is consider to take action on Wixon Creek Special Utility District. Utility permit to bore a 1.5 inch casing under a 1-inch casing for a 1-inch waterline crossing work to be performed is within the Shady Grove Soap Vision by the address of 8675 Orange Cove. Sites located precinct two.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 21 is consider to take action on Wixon Creek Special Utility District. Utility permit to board and install a 1.5 inch casing for a 1-inch waterline crossing work performed at the address of 88,777 Riley Road. Sites located in precinct two.
Message present?
Second.
Most made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 22 is consider to take action on Atmos Energy Corporation permit to construct road war for a 16-inch watt pipeline crossing under Andrew Road. under Andrew Road approximately 860 feet southeast of State Highway 21, sites located precinct two.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 23 is consider to take action on Atmos Energy Corporation permit to construct road bore for 16-inch pipeline crossing under Coraber Road approximately 2, 2,350 feet southeast of State Highway 21, sites located precinct two.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 24 is consider to take action on Atmos Energy Corporation permit to construct a road bore for 16-inch pipeline crossing under Nighthawk Court approximately 195 feet southeast of Skylark Boulevard located in Skylark Springs subdivision, sites located precinct two.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 25 is approval of Treasury report from May of 2022.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 26 is tax refund application for the following...
Move approval A to J?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 27 is budget minimum, budget minimum FY 21/22, 39.1 through 39.10.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 26, personnel change status, and we need...
Move approval A and B?
Second.
With the exception of Priscilla McCombe at the tax office, that one would need to be...
With your exception.
Second.
Okay. Motion made to approve A and B with that exception, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number, is that 29? 29 is payment of claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8116243 through claim number 8116438 and claim number 9005302 through claim number 9005381.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. We'll move down to number 32 is acknowledgement of FY 2021/22 budget actuals by funds as of July 13, 2022. Number 33 is juvenile report on detention population, and I have got that, and it's not here today. Juveniles in detention, there's 44 males, 33, and females, 11. And there are 39 juveniles on electronic monitors. And then, number 34, sheriff's report on inmate population. Sheriff?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. 651 this morning. 537 men, 114 women, 53 on electronic monitoring, and 16...
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. 35 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Hearing none. 36 is call for citizens' input and our concerns.
I didn't sign up. Can I say something?
Come on up, officer.
I'm Silas Garrett. My wife and I, Kita and I, own George's Auto Glass. And on item number six, we were talking about a ballistic bulletproof glass. I'm going to be in, my company is going to be installing some of the glasses. I do have a ballistic glass at the shop now. And I was going to extend an invitation to the commissioners and you, Judge Peters, if y'all want to come by and take a look at the glass, what we're going to be installing. You're more than welcome to come by and take a look at it. It is very interesting. They are very thick and very heavy. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizen input and our concerns? Hearing none, we will move back up to 30 and convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated. Counselor?
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. My name is Lawrence Lee Law, so I have tendered opinion, an opinion stating that it is, in my opinion, detrimental to the courts and the counties' position if this is deliberated in open court. Ask the court to take a vote. It be unanimous before it's taken up in the executive session.
I offer a motion.
Second. Most made seconded. Will, all in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Motion passes. And it is 10:31. We'll need attorneys, sheriffs, commissioners, and Katie. Charles. Okay.
Did she leave her signature on 25?
All ready? We are coming out of executive session times 10:55. There's no action to be taken, and the next item is to adjourn. Thank you.